I call this meeting in the actual county commission order. We begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the Father, our King, and the saints of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in the land, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll have the reading of minutes. Gina, I repeat that. Are your pipes ready to?
The county commission of Upsher County, West Virginia held a regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, September 11th, 2014, at Huntington.
Tony, I'm sorry.
J.C. Rafferty called the meeting to order. There were present J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner, Donnie Tenny, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, Kelly Cunningham, County Administrator, Carrie Wallace, Assistant County Administrator, and Tony Newman, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer in remembrance of the September 11th, 2001, Twin Towers and United Airlines Flight 175 victims, followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of August 28th, 2014, as submitted. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the resignation of Jody Marin and E-911 telecommunicator effective September 12th, 2014. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the advertisement for a full-time and a part-time E-911 communication center telecommunicator at the rate of $10 per hour. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the resignation of Jason Queen, Deputy Sheriff, effective September 15th, 2014. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the commission approved the employment of full-time Deputy Sheriff Sean Jeffrey Kundra as recommended by Dave "Dave" Kaufman, Sheriff, effective September 21st, 2014, at the rate of $16 per hour, increasing to $16.31 per hour after completion of required training. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the tax department volunteer Luke Elliott Lake, effective September 18th, 2014. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the employment of full-time Animal Control Officer John Slaughter at the request of Greg Harris, Facilities Director, effective September 15th, 2014, at the rate of $9 per hour and increasing to $9.50 per hour after completion of required training. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the commission approved and authorized the President to sign the authorization for Kelly Cunningham, County Administrator, to use J.C. Rafferty's official signature stamp to sign required documentation on behalf of the Upsher County Commission. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the commission approved and authorized the President to sign the authorization for Carrie Wallace, Assistant County Administrator, to use J.C. Rafferty's official signature stamp to sign required documentation on behalf of the Upsher County Commission. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the commission approved the poll workers, alternates, and emergency ballot commissioners for the November 4th, 2014, general election. Carrie Wallace provided an overview of the software systems maintenance contract at the request of J.C. Rafferty. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the commission approved and authorized the President to sign the contract effective July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015, with all maintenance levels remaining the same as last year. Carrie Wallace provided an overview of the Environmental Systems Research Institute contract at the request of J.C. Rafferty. The ESRI contract in the amount of $500 is for Terry Jo Minnick's tablet utilized for redressing and mapping purposes. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the commission approved and authorized the President to sign the contract effective September 1st, 2014 through August 31st, 2015. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the President to sign the EMBG sub-grant application, 2014, funds in the amount of $34,702. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the order extending time to settle estate pursuant to West Virginia Code Section 44-4-14 regarding the estate of Arnett Brown Corley. At 9:15 a.m., Sandra Phillips appeared before the commission to request assistance regarding a gray water runoff issue. The commission provided state resources to Ms. Phillips and will continue to research the county's authority over the issue and provide results to the fund. J.C. Rafferty reviewed the following four-year information items. Correspondence from David McFauling, City Attorney, 5.4 acre annexation on Russian forecourt. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the President to sign the certificate of annexation order. Correspondence from Jeff Palmer, Association of West Virginia Solid Waste Authorities Chair, invitation to attend the 2014 West Virginia Educational Conference on Literate Control and Solid Waste Management taking place October 19th through 21st, 2014, at the Poldom Plaza in Huntington, West Virginia. Correspondence from Robert Boindar, Dominion Resource Services Managing Director, State and Local Fair for Atlantic Coast Pipeline Informational Open Hats, Wednesday, September 17th, 2014, from 4 to 8 p.m. at the Greek Alumni Room and Performing Arts Center Lobby on the West Virginia Wesleyan Campus. Upsher County E-911 Communication Center reports for 2014. Monthly Call Center Summary Report, monthly departmental summary report, monthly and year-to-date record report. Building Permit Report for August 2014. NAZO Prescription Drug Discount Card Program Report for July 2014. Upsher County Children's Festival, Saturday, September 20th, 2014, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at the Stockard Youth Center. Agenda and/or notices of missing of meetings as listed, meeting minutes as listed, meetings as listed, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. At 9:30 a.m., Sheriff David Kaufman appeared before the commission and introduced new deputies William T. Chittister and Sean Jeffrey Kundra. At 9:37 a.m., the commission held a moment of silence in remembrance of the September 11th, 2001 victims aboard American Airlines Flight 77. At 9:45 a.m., Rick Edwards appeared before the commission and thanked Donnie Tenny for his service on the Stockard Youth Center Advisory Board and requested consideration of Troy Brady as his replacement when he leaves office. Mr. Edwards commended Troy Brady on the work he has completed thus far. The commission approved all invoices for payment. At 10:03 a.m., the commission held a moment of silence in remembrance of the September 11th, 2001 victims aboard American Airlines Flight 93. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following consolidations of land tracts as listed. The commission approved the following settlements as listed. The commission approved the following requests for time out of office as listed. With no further business, on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission adjourned at 2:25 p.m.
Thank you, Tony. Are there any additional corrections to the minutes? If not, a request and a motion to approve the minutes.
The only thing would be that Jody L. Marin is Mark, or two.
May I do a prayer with that one little pipe over there? Say.
All favor say aye. Opposed, exsine. Motion carries. We have our first meeting at 9:15, about five more minutes, so we have a few things we can take care of prior to that presentation. An approval of that bonus number for part-time West Virginia University Extension Service 4-H system, rated pay to be $8 per hour. I notice that Fred Priesters, I'm not asking Mr. to comment on that.
I just want to, I'll go on record saying that I wish it was a full-time position, but I understand, we appreciate the fact that you're able to do at least a part-time position. And I do want to clarify, if this is 29 and a half hours, or is this 19 hours, or?
49 and a half.
I, I, I'm assuming you have the job description there in front of you. We changed the title from program assistant, 4-H program assistant, to 4-H assistant because it wasn't going to be fair to ask a part-time person to do all the work we had in the previous job description. So we have moved that down. I apologize, I don't have copies with me. I mentioned before my computer froze up on me and I had it fairly frustrated the morning already. But we do appreciate your willingness to, to at least create a part-time position or bring back that position as part-time. And I'll express again, I hope that at some point we could take, down the road, when financial situation is getting a little better, we could take a look at moving that to a full-time position.
Swish. And you've been involved in the, in this application process of the meeting standing on guidelines from University.
Yes, that description was, was approved by, by West Virginia.
I'll move to approve. Second.
All favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Your question. We have the next request for approval of that advertisement for full-time tax office deputy. That position remain open until Phil. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have a request to reappoint the Parks Recreation Advisory Board members Joe Finley and Michael Lassie, the second, effective July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2016.
Moved to approve. Second.
All favor say aye. Motion carries. Next, we have advancement of Christine Foster to telecommunicator status at a current rate of pay of $10 per hour. That is based on a request by Steve Leggeri, Director of Upsher County 911, who advised that she has received her training and has done a very good job in her training. On motion?
Second.
All favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Again, motion carries. And we have approval and signature of Environmental Systems Research Institute contract effective October 1, 2014 through September 30, 2015, A R C Editor Software for Assessor and Dressing and Mapping Office Computers. Carrie Wallace Assistant County Administrator, would you like to expand on that?
Sure, this is not to be confused with the S R I contract that you signed last week. That was for a license for Terry Jo's tablet that she uses for addressing and mapping purposes. This is actually for the laptops and it's the maintenance contracts. It includes both the addressing and mapping office and the assessor's computers. Terry Jo's laptop will not be on there any longer because she's got a tablet to replace that. So it will decrease to $500. It'll come down to $1,200, yes. Helen Phillips is going to speak with Kelly Cunningham when she returns from vacation and in the event that Helen opts out of the maintenance contract for her computers, then it could decrease by another $2,400. I don't foresee that happening, but in the event that it does, it will be less.
Thank you, Carrie. It is now 9:15 and on the schedule, we have Shane Whitehair and Bob Djakovas, Region 7, Land and Water Conservation Fund grant for a waterslide at the Upsher County Pool. If there was to be a presentation or commissioners have questions concerning that proposed grant request.
I'd ask them both to come just because I know there was some confusion over where, what actually we could possibly do, cost we're looking at, those sort of things. So I thought it was just easier if they were both here to answer any questions at one time rather than trying to go back and forth.
Because the question, I recall the question was whether or not a grant would be available for such a?
Yeah, as, as I previously mentioned this last month or whenever it was, that the Land and Water Conservation Fund is an applicable route to try to get money to fund such a project. And they have, as I've mentioned before, they have grant funds available to provide 50% of the costs, eligible costs. And they propose to fund one grant up to $100,000, which means the project will be at least $200,000. And they will be expecting to provide three grants up to $60,000 and then four grants up to $30,000. So they're roughly looking at availability of $463,000 for this coming year. So now obviously there might be where they won't fund like four grants of $30,000. Depending upon the request that they get, they have the flexibility to award whatever they have in front of them. So those, those amounts aren't fixed, but they, that's what they anticipate in trying to do. So with that said, you know, and looking at your particular project, you're probably looking at least $200,000 total project cost. If, you know, we, we're assuming that when looking at a waterslide, you want something comparable to what maybe Lewis County has. And I think Bob had spoke to those representatives over there and they're looking, that was, they're saying, you know, it's at least $200,000. So the big thing was obviously come up with the, the match. I would not request anything more than $100,000 unless Bob tells me I'm wrong. I'd be even more probably familiar with this program than I am, but that's what we're looking at.
I understand there's also some issue regarding ADA compliance with the waterslide. If that might not be the type of facility, the type of recreational equipment that could be ADA compliant, so.
Well, I'll, I think Bob had had a discussion with John McGarry about that. Is that right? You know, I would hit and elaborate on that a little bit.
Yeah, John told me, of course, a waterslide is eligible, but it's not very competitive because it's hard to do the ADA thing. So, and he also told me that he has not known of a waterslide being funded for over 15 years. So the key word is eligible, but it's not competitive. Would you like to address that?
Well, say, how many applications?
But keep in mind though, I mean, we don't know what type of grants they're going to get, okay? We don't, we can't anticipate on what type of projects they're going to have in front of them. So if they only have, you know, $400,000 worth of cost in front of them to look at, I mean, doesn't mean you won't get funded, it's just, you know, if they have an abundance amount of requests and demand, you know, it might not rank as high as something that, that's what he's pertaining, I mean, that's what that conference pertaining to. So it doesn't necessarily disqualify the waterslide at all. It just means it might, if they have a lot of requests to look at, it might not rank as high as some of the other.
It's not considered as priority a project as some of the?
Well, if they get four waterslide requests, then obviously, you know, so.
Bob, you said that he told you that the last 15 years there haven't been any waterslide. Prove that. Did he say how many applications for waterslide in the last 15 years?
No, he did not.
So we don't even know if there's any been any made.
Right, but keep in mind, you're not competing against waterslides, you're competing against all applications. And they've always had more than enough applications to expend their monies. Another thing on the $200,000 cost, when I talked to Lewis County, he, you could almost see him scratching his head on the telephone, you know. He said, at least $200,000, it's probably going to be more if you have to do any site preparation. A big slide will require a foundation. And also, if you want a feature where the water is going down the slide, you're going to have plumbing and electrical issues too. So the $200,000 was the very least if everything went right. So that's information that you need to know.
Now, you had sent, I believe, Carrie and I got a copy of it, some information on waterslides. One of them that you had sent, I believe you proposed the total cost was $100,000.
I went online and found the site that listed their prices for their equipment, plus shipping and the other costs associated with it. And I did find one, I found the most expensive one that the company provided, but it's not really a giant waterslide. It's a big slide, but it's not what you would call a giant waterslide or attraction type waterslide. Also, it's a, a web link to the company that did the Lewis County Park and also the one in Clarksburg, but they didn't offer any prices with their equipment.
But I guess the question on ADA accessibility, are there any waterslides that are, that are available today that are ADA accessible?
That's out of my expertise.
I mean, if that's an issue, I think.
I just, all I can do is say that the program managers said that the Department of Interior has not approved a waterslide. He doesn't remember when, but he said, I've been here for, you know, at least 15 years. I know they haven't done it. And ADA is the big issue, that's the information I have.
Then I thought a few years ago that we looked for a waterslide.
No, it was a splash park.
But there was a waterslide involved in it because I was the boss of the province.
We looked at the waterslide, but the decision was made at the time to apply for a splash park without a waterslide and there was a waterslide in the application.
What's the possibility of applying for the splash pad this year rather than the waterslide? Is that something I could?
Let me make a comment here. I think, my suggestion, and I have said this before, I think before, you know, we figure out what we want to do, I think the good advice would be to get a vendor or a sales representative from one of these companies to come on site, take a look at your site to see what can be done, what can be done, and then decide from that. Instead of us trying to figure out, okay, we don't want to do a waterslide or we want to do a splash park. Because obviously, cost is going to be the number one factor in what we decide to do. I think that's, that's the main, main factor. So my advice would be to, to get a, when we can make the contacts, to get a representative from one of these companies who provide slides and splash parks to see what would be most advantageous for the county as far as costs and other factors considered, to see what can be done at that site and what can't. Because obviously, you know, with the pumps to get the water up on the slide and all that stuff, that's something he can provide more expertise on than we, than we can. So that's my advice for what it's worth.
Thank you. Well, that sounds like that's a good starting point. If you can help bring someone here to take a look at it, then I think that'll help in the decision-making process.
The one thing I think we need to keep in mind is we are running out of time, so we're going to have to hopefully get somebody on site as soon as possible. And I'm guessing, Kelly, we can just call you to maybe make arrangements if it's during the day to get somebody up there. That's okay?
Yes.
If that's the direction you guys?
We have to get them access.
So, I mean, if that's the direction you give your folks on it.
Sounds like a, a good starting point.
And I believe also with this grant, can you kind of explain about the, as I understood, once you get the grant for this, this is into perpetuity? With having the waterslide or you have to replace it with some similar type?
It figures out of service, yes. You have to permanently replace it with some other, some other recreational activity.
Just saying, same requirements as what we have up there now with the pool and all facilities, those under the same grant project?
Yes, I believe so.
Thank you, Shane.
Any other questions?
Do we have any idea at all, ballpark range with a splash pad, what cost, and what areas?
I think the one we looked at a couple of years ago, at the splash park, I don't recollect from what that scope was, but I think it was about $150,000. And again, it depends on what's in that, you know, what type of, I don't know.
Features and?
Yes.
Water system you need. Because I understand it from talking with Lewis County, there's quite a bit of digging that you have to, underground water supply that you have to have.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next appointment is in five minutes, so we'll continue on financial discussion action approval.
I believe item number five, I don't remember if it will be done and approved or not of that one. It was discussed, but I'm.
Well, Terry, Terry Jo mentioned to me something about wanting to get some comments on this. Have you guys worked everything out?
Well, Kelly's in the process of doing that, but she can't have a conversation with Helen right now until she gets back.
I mean, on Terry, Terry Jo said something about she wanted to be involved in the conversation.
My understanding is she was available to come in if there was questions. I thought Carrie and I, unless there's something new came up, I thought Carrie and I kind of knew what was going on with it, but I don't know. Did she tell you that, did she mention that this morning? Because maybe I need to get it right.
I'm going to talk to you about something else a day or so ago, and I mentioned something about this. Maybe you all, if you've had a discussion and, and everything, you're talking.
I think we're good.
Okay, you're good, okay.
If that's the case, then it's our motion to approve that request number five.
Sure.
All favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Greg Harris, Safe Structures and Sites permanent ordinance officer requesting an order to clean up from the Upsher County Commission in reference to case number 111413-01. And SNC is requesting that we send communication to the owner of that property. Your recommendation included that you correct or she correct any health and safety hazards included limited to removal and proper disposal of debris, trash, junk vehicles, or removal and proper disposal of environmental hazards.
Just to give you some additional information on this property, there is a shed in the back of the property that needs to be closed for public safety and also a second story window that needs closed off. This case has been opened since November of 2013. They've been given multiple chances to come into compliance with the ordinance. So I recommend that you send a letter requiring the cleanup of the property within 30 days.
Which is routine in these types of cases. Okay, do I have a motion to provide a letter to the owner of the property?
So moved. Second.
All favor say aye. Motion carries. And it's now almost 9:30. With correspondence of Ron Hooton, West Virginia Division of Highways, District 7 Manager, and Chad Laura, Bridge Engineer, Youth Camp Gitter Bridge Inspection. Carrie, if you'd like to expand on contents of that letter and?
Sure. We applied for two grants, one in five, for $5,000 and the other for six, totaling $11,000, which the estimate we got to repair this bridge two years ago was $12,000 with the matches we would have the funds. However, because it's two years ago, I'm assuming that the price on that is going to increase. We did just receive the final award yesterday, so we can move forward on this project. It is a reimbursable grant, so you will have to pay for the repair and then get reimbursed for it.
And that was about $11,000?
Total for the two. So we can contact a repair company to come out and give us an estimate, but I doubt they'll be able to move forward with any repairs until spring.
So does a, does a private company do the repairs and is it part of highways?
I think that it's a private company that would have to do it because the Department of Highways does not own the bridge. So I wouldn't think that they would do work on a private bridge, but to be honest.
But if we, if a private company does it, wouldn't we have to bid?
Yeah, well, no, because it's under $15,000. So if we got a few estimates that was under, that were under $15,000.
It may be a good thing now. But I don't remember unless, unless in the past, because I know that we've had inspection, people wouldn't have to do things. I don't remember ever bidding it for, maybe a private contractor did do it. I just, for some reason, say, with part of highways, we charged us and we paid them.
Hopefully that is the case because Ron Hooton is the one that did the inspection a couple of years ago instead of those $11,000. So if it's the same person during the inspection, hopefully it'll be.
Well, he could answer that question, I guess.
Right.
It is now 9:30 and we have a presentation by Patty Hamel, Executive Director of West Virginia Association of Counties. Welcome to Upsher County.
Thank you very much. Pleasure to be here. The fall even cooperated this morning, lifted, had an easy trip up. I want to thank you all for having me, appreciate the time on the agenda. And I'm going to start out a personal comment. I commend you all for your professional appearance. My dad was an attorney and he always, I never, I rarely saw him without a jacket in time. And he always said, if you, if you are going to make a living using your mind, you, you better look like you can make money. So I always noted his professional appearance.
Parents, it's can be deceiving.
But I have heard from elected officials that you all were reluctant to join the Association of Counties and so I wanted to talk with you about that. And of course, Donnie's a long-time officer and is the Vice President for Commissioners. So, you know, he is free at any time to bring up issues to our board that he has. But I wanted to maybe stress some things that you may not realize. And that we are the only staff for your elected officials. Now, Commissioners have an organization, but the. officials. Now, Commissioners have no organization, but the county clerks do not, the circuit clerks do not, the assessors do not, and the prosecutors do not. The sheriffs have one person, and I, I quite frankly, do not know how they do everything that that one person has to do. They run a camp, they do scholarships, they do all law enforcement training. It's the, it's mind-boggling what, what they have one person do, and probably somewhat telling that they have some difficulty keeping that one person. And plus, they get most of their dues from private contributions, so that's opening a lot of envelopes, and that's a job in and of itself. So, if it wasn't an Association of Counties, we would go back to the days of nineteen sixty, where each organization just kind of did their own thing. None of them had any staff, but they just did their own thing. And nobody was working together, and county government was just floundering. The state, as you know, we are the, one of the most centralized states, if not the most centralized in the country, loves to take over duties, and that's what they were doing with county government in the sixties. So, our founder brought the idea, let's put everybody together, work together, preserve, protect county government. And we still remain the only staff for the, for those six organizations. And they are so active. I, I don't know that you realize how hard they work and how effective they are. And, and I would say they would be effective with me or without me. I think I helped them out, but, but for example, I'll just use your county clerk who was at our office, our first official meeting in our new office yesterday, working hours on probate matters and issues to take to the legislature. County clerks work on election issues that we help a lot with. So, you know, if any organization would need staff, they do, but they rely on the Association of Counties. Same with the assessors. We retain Jerry Knight, as Donnie, you know, to help with property tax issues. I think if we did nothing else for Commissioners, that is the number one best thing that we do, because he homes in on all those property tax bills that get introduced, analyzes them, and lets me know the impact they would have on your property tax base. He's, he's just a wealth of knowledge. And, and if I say to a legislator, or if I give out a white paper that Jerry has helped me with, and I, the name Jerry Knight carries some weight. So, that, that's a great benefit to us. And of course, he works closely with assessors as well. Your assessors jump on property tax issues. Helen, of course, has been very active on our board. She was somewhat distressed by this. I think she told the Assessors Association they could replace her if they wanted to. She didn't feel she could be effective if her county wasn't a full member. Your prosecutor, I've known since we went through Leadership of West Virginia together in nineteen ninety-five, he is present in the Prosecutors Association. So, also very active. I don't know, they have an institute. The institute is absolutely not allowed to work with the association. There's a bright line between the two. The institute is a state agency. So, the Prosecutors Association is much like the county clerks or the Assessors Association, just a volunteer organization. The institute absolutely cannot lobby, so I am the only lobbyist for the prosecutors, which means I'm talking about a lot of issues I know very little about. I'll be on the phone with, with somebody ten minutes before a committee meeting. But one thing that prosecutors did just this session is really stopped a bill that would have been an unfunded mandate to Commissioners. And I don't know if you're aware of this, it was a bill that would require audio and video recording of all felony suspects all the time. If that was not done, if there was some confession or statement from a felony suspect that was not recorded, it was actually inadmissible, according to this bill. But you can imagine, even the state police, they have detachment throughout the state that, that would, that they would have to spend a lot of money for to make them capable of audio and video recording. And while it is an ideal to make, to mandate it, was to make the commission pay for it, and to make the prosecutors' jobs possibly even more difficult. So, that's an issue that just this year, their interaction with the legislature came down to at least two pretty lengthy meetings with, with staff and legislators on that bill. I think greatly benefited Commissioners, as well as prosecutors and sheriffs. Then, just on law enforcement issues, I know that's the biggest piece of your budget pie. And maybe I don't do a good job of letting folks know what, what we do there. I have been on the Law Enforcement Professional Standards Board, part of the Governor's Committee on Crime Delinquency Correction for, well, over a decade, a long time. It used to be called the Law Enforcement Training Subcommittee. I was actually helpful in getting that committee hooked up with our West Virginia Counties Risk Pool, so that when they do risk management training, your deputies get credit for that, because they have to have, I think sixteen hours of training credit a year. I should know that number, I've been on the police so long. I'm also on the Community Corrections Subcommittee, and we meet four times a year. The law enforcement meets every month but not number. It's a very active committee. It's a very important committee, because we can actually decertify officers if they're not up to standards. And so, if I can't go, our attorney, Jack Klungas, I consider it to be a very important responsibility. Community Corrections is, I've been a charter member since Community Corrections started. I always call myself the late person, but I realize after years of meetings, I sort of know stuff. And, and this year, they, they did let, they let me chairman. And it's a little bit of a difficult position for me, because, because of our membership. And I said that, you know, it might be, if there's a dispute in the Community Corrections Program where there's, like, between a sheriff and a commission or something, it puts me in a little bit difficult spot. So, I had to sort of put on a different hat. We did have to go to one county where there was some problems, and they would jeopardize, the infighting was jeopardizing their grant. And it actually went very well. I was very concerned, because it involved three different county officials. And I looked at and said, "You're all my members. You all need to work together." It's, it's kind of my message all the time. The, and then I just got put on the Sexual Assault Forensic Examination State Black Board, which has become another committee under the Governor's Committee. That is a bill that I was actively involved in for prosecutors, so that there can be hospitals and sexual assault nurse examiners trained to do these exams. And honestly, that's about as much as I know about the subject. Prosecutors will be taking the lead on that issue locally. The prosecutors got a new duty this year, they will be convening those local boards for those sexual assault forensic examinations. So, yet another issue that is very important to, to elected officials, and I'm heavily involved with it at the legislature. And I think it helps Commissioners, in that all of those things can lead to costs. And, you know, I feel like one of my roles is to make sure there are no unfunded mandates coming from those types of things. The, your circuit clerk is our representative to the Court Security, Court Security Fund, or what I believe it's called. By statute, we appoint a representative, and it's traditionally known, circuit clerk. So, his fellow circuit clerks felt that, you know, he was young, technology-oriented, and so forth, and were anxious to get him involved. So, your Upsher County officials are very involved, as you all are as well. And I, I would really hate to lose Upsher County as a member for that reason. There are counties where they are not active. I, I hardly know any of them. And I know all of the Upsher County officials. That tells me you're active in the Association of Counties, as well as your own organizations. So, and you're active on other state boards as well. So, I'd really like to keep Upsher County as a member. If, now, I just want to say, I'm not the association. If there's an issue with me, again, I work for six groups of elected officials, four hundred and forty-four people. Not everyone's going to like what we do. It's, I, that was a hard lesson for me to learn. You want to please everybody. But, you know, I'll retire, there'll be a new face. I'm not the association. Officers are the association, board members are the association, workers like Debbie, who, who head committees that are, that come up with very important legislation, they're the association. I may be the face for counties at the Capitol, but I'm sixty-three years old, and I could retire tomorrow. There'll be a new face, and I'll be long gone. I'll be in Myrtle Beach visiting my grandsons, or in Oak Hill, taking care of my parents' property. I've got a lot of responsibilities. But, so I, it's, if it's, if it's a problem with me, or something that I have done, or a direction that you don't like, Donnie's in a perfect position to help correct that, or as a board member and officer, or, you know, it's certainly open for discussion. But I am not the association. I, the association is our membership. And, and if I'm veering off from a direction our membership wants to take, then that's certainly a cause for concern. But I think for the most part, and we only have three counties that have joined, and one just let me know their, their checks come September twenty-fifth. The other asked for a dues reduction, which we gave them a very generous reduction, didn't we, Donnie? It was like, whoa, we can't do that for everybody. But I haven't heard from them if they will accept that dues reduction. They, they had some financial issues. And, and other than that, everyone else has joined this year. So, I'm, that's a brief overview. I'm, I'm here to really encourage Upsher County to join us as a county, and, and to get some feedback from you as to things you'd like to see done differently, if anything. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Patty. Commissioners, have any comments?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you're parked out front, that you don't stay in one or two hours.
I know, I know. I was especially due my purse for, I was standing here, I would just say. I brought you some net caps, it seems to like.
And I do appreciate you stopping up here. And I've heard nothing but praise in reference from Jake Rigger Prosecutor's Office, Debbie's office, county clerk, the assessor's office. You know what I mean? I have heard nothing but good things, and all three of them has approached me, trying to get me to change my mind on whether we ought to join the West Virginia Association of Counties. I think it's a great organization. I think you do a great job. The only issue I see is, I don't see where the West Virginia Association of Counties does anything for county commissioners. And I've only been here a year, you know what I mean, and I'm sure that I could be corrected, but I hear great things coming from Jake, you know what I mean, Rigger, from Debbie Wilpon, from Helen Phillips. I think you do a great job representing the majority of the elected office. Matter of fact, I know you do, because I hear nothing but good things. My issue is that I don't know what the West Virginia Association of Counties has done for the county commission. You know what I mean? And I attend the county commission meetings, and that is where I stand, and I've been a hundred percent honest with you. And I think you do a great job, and you have respect from the elected officials.
I appreciate that. I, I forgot to mention one thing. We had a hu, we were co-sponsors of a huge conference that took place in Upsher County, at Wesley, this summer in June, the Try This West Virginian, over three hundred people. And, and again, what we do for Commissioners, it's a little outside your box, but it's stressing leadership in healthy initiatives for counties, and that is, that is certainly something that Commissioners can take a lead role on. And if you go to trythiswv.com, it is a fabulous website that has been put together with success stories all over the state, a lot of them led by county commissions, some of them by municipalities. But, and again, it's taking you outside your, I guess, statutory and constitutional responsibilities, but it's providing opportunities, you know, here's something that worked, and you can do this in, in your county. So, so I, I think that is something, we had some commissioners on the panel. What, I have to say, my cannon and the campus of Wesley looked, it was beautiful. I commend everybody that had anything to do with the conference and getting ready for it, because it, it really, people were just, I mean, like I said, over three hundred people, many of them had never been to this area, were just raving about it. So, but, but those are the kinds of things. Commissioners have not been well-acting in having bills introduced. There hasn't been one, I, I call our bills, our bills. If I'm, if I'm getting the sponsors, and I'm, you know, taking the bill drafting, you have to dog the bill. I, I get a lot of bills passed. And, and the ideas come from the, the groups. And there hasn't really been a commissioners' bill for several years, not one that I can work on. There was the Vice and Consent Bill, but five other elected officials opposed to that, so I couldn't work on it. But as far as legislation, it, there has not really been a Commissioners' bill that is their bill. And if it was one we all agree to, I could certainly work on and help with it. I have a very good track record for getting legislation passed. And I think when, for example, county clerk, I don't know if you all know this, county clerks brought early voting to West Virginia. People love early voting. It makes county government look good. Our courthouse book, it makes commissions look great, taking care of their courthouses. So, I, I actually think we do a lot for Commissioners. But it might not be as direct as you want. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Appreciate it.
Can I say something?
Come on here, Debbie.
I think you're such a gentleman, I'm calling, that what Patty does lobbying for us, and he helps the county and helps the commission, and sending money, and again, the different posts I take, they do. If she lobbies for us, helps the county commission too, in the long run. Just like with Criminal, the bill that she was just talking about, with the, what was the, what they had to do?
Statement recording.
Statement recording, yes. Look how much money that could have cost a county. And that, that directly affects the county commission. So, what Patty does directly affects the county commission also. And I know, as the elected officials here in the county, we would appreciate your all support for the county with the association. The other elected officials, two of them are in court, two of them are out today, they couldn't be here. And if they won't talk to you all, we tried to, that we would, county, as elected officials, we would support, would help you and support the Association of Counties. Donnie, you've been on for how long? How many years?
I don't know.
Long time.
I don't remember either.
And this is the first year that I can remember, and I look back and not find where the, the county commission, Upsher County, did not join the association. So, we would appreciate that you would reconsider this year. And I think you have a new commissioner coming on that needs to have that decision to make. Let him decide.
If we ever make that decision after the first of the year.
But he can't attend the meetings, because we're going out.
Well, he's not a commissioner, yet.
But next year, he can attend the association.
He can, if he wants to. He can still attend, Patty. We have people that aren't members who attend the Association of Counties. We have people that are members.
We have a hundred percent membership for.
I'm saying that we have people who aren't members, that can't attend the meetings, is what I'm saying. We have people that attend the county commission meetings that aren't, aren't members of the County Information Association. So, I mean, it's open, it's not restricted, is it?
Well, every county's been a member for.
But, but I'm saying it's not restricted if someone's not a member. They can still attend, right? Don't you have a registration, don't you have two different registration cities?
They don't have to be a board member to attend.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, no, we'd love to have people come aboard me when we go back and fix your system.
It's still available.
But don't tell them you.
But with the due, I might, I might say this, with the due structures, it was changed the last time there was an issue, then there were several counties that didn't join for a while. The due structure, the due structure was changed, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if the other elected officials in Upsher County choose to join, they will pay the full dues.
That's correct.
And they, Helen will still be able to serve on her board of directors, Jake will still be able to serve in his position, Brian will still be able to serve in his position, Debbie will still be able to do what she wants to do, and you'll get your full dues. Correct?
That is correct. And we, we had that a couple of times, about ten years ago, and ever since then, we have a hundred percent participation from everybody.
So, therefore, you're still paying the same amount of money.
Right.
But you're just not being, being a member of the association. So, I don't understand the reason.
Well, but what I'm saying, your concerns is addressed in that situation, because you can still be a full member, you can still participate, you can still get the full benefits of being a member of the organization. But the things that you're concerned about are still available to you and all the elected officials in Upsher County with that due structures.
Okay, so what happened to the county?
Well, the county, I, I don't want to get into, I don't want, you know, I've got about ten more meetings, and I, and I, and, and I don't want to get into a situation like happened some years ago, on the last day of some. day of some felony commission left and it was suspended. I don't want to get into that, okay? And I don't want to do that today. Patty's done some great things for the people that she served. I've said this in the past, I believe that all the problems and all the disagreements, and as Patty pointed out, I've been on county commission board of directors, I've been on Association of Counties board of directors, I've been in EOC meetings, I've been for years involved in a lot of the different committees, member relations committees. And it seems like all the disagreements, all the conflicts is always with all the other elected officials and the county commission. And I understand, and it's been stated before by people a lot more intelligent than I, by virtue of the way the state has set up the elected officials, they create a situation that naturally puts the county commission in one position and all the other elected, because we're responsible for the funding. We're responsible for that area, and that within itself creates a lot of problems. That's one of our major responsibilities. You have certain responsibilities by state code that you have to do. And where a lot of conflicts comes in is, you need things, you want things, that we can't necessarily fund. And that creates a lot of problems. And I think by virtue of the way the county commission is in relationship with all the elected officials, that within itself creates some issues. But my experience is that the majority of the problems are all the other elected officials and the county commission. That's why we've had twice on Patty's board, we've had, it never came through, but they wanted to change that to where a majority ruled, which would mean if the county commission opposed a legislative issue, if the majority ruled, then the Association of Counties could go ahead and support that. Which now, if one member organization is opposed to a legislative issue, Patty's neutralized, according to the bylaws.
That is correct.
So there's been lots of efforts in order to get the Association of Counties to the point to where, let's say, the majority rules. And the majority is always going to roll against the county commission. There's very few issues, and you're right, Patty, there's not a lot of legislative issues that the county commission proposes, because we spend all our time fighting unfunded mandates. It's not that the county commission doesn't do things, it's that we spend most of our time in Charleston fighting legislation...
But Patty, you're fighting those for...
Well, we have someone that's fighting for it, and sometimes that causes a problem when you have two voices for one organization. And we have lobbyists, we have an executive director for County Information Association, and that's why I made this comment in different meetings and different forums. I think the very best thing that could happen would be if the County Commission Association was a standalone organization, and the West Virginia Association of Counties supported, was representing all the other elected groups. Then there wouldn't be a conflict. The 99% of conflicts is always the other elected groups and the county commission. That's been my experience. It doesn't matter if it's in committee meetings, member relation committees, EOC or whatever, or board meetings, that seems to be where the conflict lies. And, you know, sometimes the best thing to do to avoid conflicts is just don't be involved in it. Do your thing, do what you know you need to do, in this case, as a county commissioner, and fight our battles. And that way, you don't put yourself in a situation where you're fighting with him.
But you have all other, you have, you have two other counties that are joining except...
That's fine. And they, every county, every county has a right to do what they want to do. But I will say this, what this commission said, if the other five elected officials in Upsher County want to join, fine. You can join, you can have full privileges, and Patty will get her full dues with the dues structure changed. Instead of divided to six, it's divided to five. And so she'll get her full dues, and you all will get the full benefits of being a member of the Association of Counties.
And you all get the full benefits, that's good.
We get the full benefits? No.
No, we, that's the, full dues is full dues. A county's a member and...
Right. And that's why that bylaw...
We would not exclude you.
Right.
You can throw your newsletter in the trash or whatever you want to do, but it's, you know, full dues is full dues. We don't know where it comes from. Some counties, they have different accounts, we get three or four different checks, and Just to address the issue of commissioners and the other officials, I think you would find that that would, it's the other officials who are protecting the tax base. The assessors, my gosh, they can't be beat for protecting the tax base. It's the county clerks that work on one of the most visible functions of county government, the election. I mean, look how much focus is on elections now. You would, commissioners would lose that contact with the ideas that are coming from their other elected officials and not have input into those ideas. And as you know, we have a lot of discussion at our board meetings. If county clerks present an issue, the commissioners have a chance to say, "Well, it would work better if we did it this way." And as you said, Donnie, there are very few issues that are in contention. I can only think of one in the last several years where the assessors have had an interest in increasing homestead exemption. And pretty much everyone, including commissioners, has had some concerns about that due to our older population and the tax base, especially in some of the rural counties. And so we've never adopted that. But for the most part, there's agreement on the issues. And it's good to know what the other officials are working on. Anything that makes county government serve citizens better, again, use early voting as just a fabulous idea that came from county clerks as well, there are other ideas also catching on. The early voting, they used to call it satellite precincts, early community vote. Some counties are doing that, and folks love it. And anything that, you know, people see county government as a whole.
But you know what's sad in line with that? Our percentage of the people that vote hasn't changed that much.
It has not.
And I agree. You know what my thoughts are, and I've said all along? I think you should be able to vote on the internet, you do everything else there. You have all your private information out there, you have credit card, you buy stuff. I know there's concern about security, but my golly, look at what you see in the news about voter fraud now with paper and electronic. But I agree. But you know what? I still think, and early voting points that out, it doesn't matter how convenient you make it for people, if they don't have the initiative and they don't have the patriotic duty to vote, you could go to their house and sit down at their table and buy them coffee and a doughnut, and they're not going to vote if they don't want to.
That is their turn.
So, I mean, I agree we should do everything we can, but if people aren't going to take the initiative to vote, you can do everything you can. And it hasn't helped.
It hasn't.
And it hasn't helped. The ones that would go to the polls and vote, it's convenient to go ahead and vote early.
You're right, it has not. You would think it would have dramatically turned out, and it's not.
But it doesn't change the mindset.
I've said, you said similar to what I've said to county clerks, you could put a ballot on top of a free pizza and deliver it to a house, and people take the pizza and rip off the ballot.
Right.
And I don't know why. Those of us who vote do not understand the mindset. But actually, it's one of my things that I think the Association of Counties, because elections are a county function, it's an idea I have that I'd like to pursue, how do we build up the turnout and work towards 2016 and some sort of big voter initiative? Because counties are, you know, county clerk spends just as much time, whether she gets a 13% turnout or a 60% turnout, there's just as much money. So who better to spearhead an initiative for voting than counties and the Association of Counties? So that's just one of many things I think we could be working on. I think, Donnie, as I explained in our board meeting, I think we need to be looking at the big picture. That, you know, what's county government going to look like in 20 years? Are we keeping current? Are we relevant? And so forth. And I think we're not focusing enough on that. That's my little soapbox.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I'm sure this is an issue that we've visited a number of times. Okay, continuing then, providing some information. We have a correspondence from Mary Jo Thompson, Community Development Director, and a letter of introduction of Tony O'Leary, Community Development Representatives for Regions 6, 7, 8, and 9.
I'll tell them, Patty.
And you see in the indication, it's strictly a letter identifying Mr. O'Leary's position and responsibilities. Next, we have agendas, some meetings, we have minute meetings, and we have meetings scheduled, as well as appointments needed for coming board. I'm glad to be great with Phil, too, difficulties today, the Bronx Recreation.
They were willing to participate, weren't prepared.
Yes, with a little heart, wasn't it?
Yeah, just a little, not much.
And we always are open for community, you know, people involved in the community to step forward and become involved in the board, because success of the board rests on good volunteers, good people who are interested in those various aspects. So if anyone is interested in serving on the board, please do a P, contact our office administrators, and make your request. Are there any other issues for discussion?
So say, if you want to just note that we canceled that.
Oh, yes. We have an 11 o'clock executive session scheduled in the agenda, however, that has been canceled, and therefore will not be held this evening. If nothing else remains, we'll take care of some bills and...